Morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for October 6th. We will begin as is customary with the observance of a moment of silence. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is a public comment. Any takeers?
Are you looking at us because you're here?
No, I'm just looking into the general audience, but this would be a time to speak if there is speaking to do.
Okay, I will.
Would you please rise and just give us your name and where you're from?
Linda Boyer from Lebanon, used to work here in the courthouse. Norma G., everybody remember Norma G., she's the head of assessment. Barbara worked at Cedar Haven, John, I'm sure everybody has known John. And we're retired employees and that's why we're here. Because I'm sure you're all aware of the problems with inflation and the way things have gone up in the way things cost. And we always have been involved with things, I can't say always, but we try to stay involved. And Tom Baini formed this group for one, two reasons. One was to look out for the benefits and things that the retired employees would do and keep track of those kinds of things. And for the fellowship, which is what we become more of than the other. And we would like to state the case that as everything else goes up, the COLA probably should keep pace with it, but I don't know that it has. And that's basically why we're here. But we do appreciate everything that you've done. They've been very good with putting things in the retirement packets and printing them up. And so we do appreciate that and thank you for that.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on behalf of that issue?
Oh, yes, do you have a question?
Well, I have two things.
May I have your name, please?
Oh, Barbara Eisenhower.
Okay, yeah, you can sort of stand. We just need your name and where you're from, so that's.
I'm from Lebanon, Pennsylvania. I worked at Cedar Haven for thirty-three years. Number one, well, when I first went to Cedar Haven, we had a pension plan. And you were supposed to put six percent in, that was mandatory. But under what they told us then and what they had told us repeatedly over the years that the county was going to match it, which we all know they eventually didn't match. And the other thing we were told is that every time Social Security got a raise, we would get a raise in our pension.
The Social Security portion?
Yeah. No, the pension would go up. If they got two percent, we would get two percent in our pension.
Wow, I never heard.
I've never heard that.
Well, that's what they were telling us back in the eighties and nineties.
They being the county?
Yeah, the county was telling us that.
Wow.
So that, you know, I don't know, you know, if they lied to us or we were just told falsehood, I don't know.
Well, I think those are probably close to the same things.
Yeah, I know.
But I would rather think that there was a misunderstanding because that would be more likely that, why would they lie to you about something that they're going to disappoint you with? I mean, that, that doesn't make sense.
I mean, not most of us, the long-term employees, we did raise our pension to be more than a six percent.
Sure.
And then number two is, I've had the county health insurance ever since I retired. And it was great insurance. I mean, I paid for it. You know, it's not that they gave it to me free, I paid for it. I mean, they took the Blue Cross right off my pension check, the prescription right off my, you know, check too. So I was really upset and I know other people were too, when the county decided to drop us.
Well, my understanding of that is that dropping, you still were eligible under the, you know, without any pre-existing condition issues or anything to go to any other carrier.
I know, but it's just like if you've done something for twenty years and then all of a sudden you get told, you know, that all of a sudden your insurance is going to end at the end of the year.
For sure, that's a responsibility.
And which was great insurance, so.
Our insurance company advised us that there are so many plans out there that had more benefits and cost less money. And they, they didn't understand why our employees were not taking advantage of that.
Retirees.
I mean, sorry, retired, retired employees. And so what we did was talk with area agency on aging and they were offering counseling to help people get those plans. And in fact, I had several retirees come to me and I explained that. And afterwards, they came back to me and said, thank you so much for pointing us in that direction. We, you were right, we got better prices and I have just as much or more coverage. And they were thrilled with the coverage.
Yeah, I haven't found that yet.
Oh, did you go to the area agency on aging?
Not yet, because the new prices don't come out till October.
Okay.
So why would you go? But I know, I mean, our insurance was, once you met your Medicare deductible, you had no copays. You, you really didn't pay anything after you met your Medicare deductible. You didn't pay anything the rest of the year.
For anything, anything that was approved by Medicare.
And you could go to any doctor you want, you could have any test you want without asking permission. You could go to a specialist if you wanted to. I mean, it was just great insurance. Not, Capital Blue Cross did call me at my home and tell me, you know, asked me to stay on, you know. And they did try to give the comparable plan to the county. But she said she couldn't give me a price because they don't come out till October. So, anyway.
Would you want to respond to the first?
Let me respond to the first. The automatic part of the COLA, that was never part of the County Pension Act. The County Pension Act said COLA right from the start has been an optional benefit. The Retirement Board could grant or not grant. If you were told it was, I agree with Commissioner Phillips, that was a misinterpretation. It had been in past years. I think it was way back, even before my time, I think they were granting it on a regular basis. But it has never been an automatic, the law does not allow that. You only have to visit it once every three years. And, but it's never been an automatic COLA at all. That was never part of the Pension Act.
And this would be a pension board issue to be taken.
Correct.
But could you give some detail on what the cost?
If, if, and I have the current numbers. If we awarded a COLA for 2023, it would be with the rate effective August 31st according to the Act 63. It would be eight point one percent and would cost the county seven million five hundred fifty-one thousand dollars. Amortized over four years would cost the county nine million dollars. And that nine million, that two point, two million two hundred forty-two thousand a year would be in addition to the annual required contribution, currently running about three million, which would mean that over those four years, if it stayed at three million for the annual contribution, the county would be giving you almost six million dollars for each of those four years. And take into effect that we're doing it over four years, which currently is consistent, but the Government Accounting Standard Board is pushing for and recommending that it be paid in one year. Which in essence, if they make that actually an accounting act in the next few years, which is what we anticipate, that would mean any outstanding, if there's five million or four million left, we would have to pay that four million that year in addition.
My only addition to that would be that for probably the last ten years, we have fully fulfilled our obligation for the required deposit in your pensions. And so the fund is very solvent. And that should be a comfort to you also that prior to that, there have been many years that it was not, you put a hundred thousand in instead of three million. And here, we've been, we've been pounding that with exactly what was required by the auditor. So I think that's another good, you know, thing to be considered that your, the security of that fund has really been enhanced in the last ten years. And I think that's what gets us to an A-plus rating with, you know, the rating issue, rating issuers that reflect, you know, the work that's been done in that. So I just give you that as a little extra comfort that you know that that money is there. So Jim, could you have some to add to that?
Well, I was going to just clarify some of those things which you both touched on, but the, because it sounds like there's some misunderstandings out there for a very long time and I'd rather there not be. The county, the county's contribution to the pension fund is, is not a match, like a 401K has a match. You know, some employers, if you put in three percent, the employer will match three percent. And that's not how a defined benefit plan pension works. What, what the defined benefit plan that you have essentially promises is that upon retirement, the money that you have put in plus the interest that the county has, has put in, which is a guaranteed, at least guaranteed four percent, regardless of what the stock market or anything does, you're guaranteed that four percent. So upon retirement, your monthly benefit is, is guaranteed for good, for as long as you live or whatever, whatever option you select, maybe for your, for a beneficiary. So I just wanted to clarify county match is not a dollar for dollar like a 401K. Defined benefit plan is becoming, as I think a lot of people know, rarer and rarer, but it still exists here. And so I just wanted to, I just want to clarify that match. And you made the comment that the county stopped matching it. And that's what Commissioner Phillips, I think, just addressed. There was a period of ten or twelve years where the, the contribution from the county did not meet the requirement that, of the accounted, requirement that was accounted for or that was, you know, demanded. In 2014, the county made a one-time ten million dollar deposit into that fund to catch up some of that. And as Commissioner Phillips said, has, has made every dime of the required contribution since then. So while there was a period of time that it, it could be said the county wasn't meeting its obligation, you know, that's, that's ten years ago or more now and, and we've been current. So I just, I'm just saying it maybe in a different way than, than, than you, than the others did. So, and I've, I've been here twenty-six years, I'm not aware of any connection between Social Security and, and the county's pension that one requires anything of the other. They're totally, they're, they're federal, it's a federal program versus, versus a county's obligation, so. I, I know, I know that's been your understanding, I just wanted to make sure that if, if it's only you or if it's the whole group of retirees, if that's the impression, I just wanted to clarify that.
And we will put this on the agenda for the Pension Board discussion, discuss it further, so that, just so you know that will be, where it will be deliberated.
May I make one more observation? We have a whole lot less employees than we used to paying into the fund. And again, you're getting a guaranteed amount, so the stock market is another consideration. And, you know, I'm just so thrilled that we're able to meet our obligation to fully fund your pension and give you what was promised. So I just ask you to consider that, that we're doing the best we can.
On the other side of that, a lot of us are dying off, so we don't have near as many retired employees to take care of.
Well, new people retire every day. We have another long-term employee retiring today.
And, and, I mean, kidding aside, the life expectancy is longer and retirees are hanging on the program longer. You shouldn't say hanging on, that's a terrible way to say it. Do you understand what I mean? People are simply living longer and, and drawing on the pension longer. And I think right now, we have, the number of pensioners in the program is, is about half of the number of employees that we actually have.
It's long, because I get a yearly printout of every retiree in the county.
Yeah.
And I counted it. I mean, the last time I counted it, it was over five hundred.
Oh, is it that many?
What's that?
What's the number that you know of?
I think we send out five, we pay a five eight hundred.
Yeah.
So we have like six hundred, we have like six hundred employees.
Wow, and we have, we have. Yeah, six hundred employees supporting eight hundred retirees, so that's significant.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it is, I get that printout and I'm thinking, so I compare last year's to this year, so I compare the two to find out who newly retired, so I can send them a letter to join our organization. It takes me a while.
Well, we, we appreciate you coming in and we hope you hang on for a lot, well, even more years.
So we can come miss you again.
So that's finished, I just want to ask for a public comment. I'm going to nudge Pam, if you wouldn't mind talking about Saturday's Cullman. Or Cullman Park event?
Oh, okay. Pam Tacoma, Lebanon City, we are doing a harvest festival at Coleman Memorial Park. Everyone's invited, but it's more geared towards kids ten and under and hayrides and pumpkin painting and those kinds of things. It's going to be chilly, but it's going to be sunny. So come on out and enjoy the park and enjoy the weather.
Thank you. We'll now look for the approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
It's been moved in second, are there any additions, deletions or corrections? Very none all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move. Mrs. Newlin, Treasury's report.
Okay, we had receipts on ten-four and ten-five of four thousand five hundred and one dollars and two cents. Bring us to total cash of two million fifty-four thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Our expenditure is lead of one million one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and seventeen cents. The tax claim is six thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents. That raises the balance in nine hundred twenty-seven thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the Treasurer's report, subject to audit.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve the Treasurer's report as presented. Any questions or comments? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
Do you have some resolutions we have to approve? Payments have need to be approved.
What do you make of it? Want to pay me? Oh.
Okay, the first one would be three thousand seven hundred eight, three hundred seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars and four cents. And that's for the two thousand eight, eight, that one from Wells Fargo.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that bond payment. Any questions or comments? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
The second one is for our two thousand sixteen general obligation bond, and that's eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the eighteen thousand nine hundred and sixty dollar payment.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve that general obligation bond. Any questions on payment, any questions, comments? Now, in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same sign, so move.
The next amount is one million eighty-six thousand two hundred and thirty dollars, and that's for a loan from Fulton Bank.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we make that loan payment from the general fund, any questions or comments? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
The next one is the two thousand seventeen general obligation bond, the Fulton Financial, and that's one hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fulton Financial payment of one hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve that bond payment, any questions or comments? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
And the next one is our general obligation bond, series two fifteen A, two thousand fifteen A. It's one million sixty-four thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that bond payment, any questions or comments? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
And our last one is our general obligation bond for 2021, and that's six hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fulton Financial payment of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second. It's been moved in second that we make that bond payment, any question or comment regarding the motion? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so ordered.
Jim, just make a comment that this is where we're transitioning from the old to the new. So if you recall from budget, when we were budgeting for debt service, we have debt that's retiring and being paid off as the new debt for the Emergency Services Operations Center is coming on. So this is the, this is the heaviest year as we transition, because we have both in this year, but then next year, the twenty, the two thousand eight drops off. And we continue to go with the twenty twenty-one issue, which gets paid off in twenty forty-six. We'll all be here for that, right?
I don't know that I'll make it. Carry on.
Sally mentioned she has a resolution. If you know the fundamentals of it, if you know the, the account it's for and so on, and you're willing to approve that, bring a resolution for signature.
Yeah, we, I have a account I have to open for probation. It's a juvenile grant in aid account, which they have to keep now in a separate account. So that's what it's for.
Motion.
Motion approved.
A second motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve that grant in aid account, which is not probation, any question or comment? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
You are capable.
All the same sign, so move. Before we go into the next part of the agenda, I just wanted to announce that we are going to have a public, no, we're going to have an executive session tomorrow morning for union negotiations at nine-thirty, so that's just to make that part of the record today. And while you're here, if you just have a couple of dates, you can keep in mind, October twenty-fourth is the last day to register to vote and mail-in ballots are due back by November first. And the office over there will be open until five PM on that particular day, so they're going to stay open an extra half hour. Don't wait till four fifty-five to show up. Please, you know, get, get those in as quickly as possible so we can process everything in a timely fashion. So that's just of commercial. Now we have, Michelle, would you like to give your, introduce yourself and give your report?
Michelle Snively, Director of Human Resources. Under Personnel, Transactions, Resignations and Terminations. Janine Jacoby, Substitute Senior Center Manager for Area Agency on Aging, resignation effective September twenty-seventh. Lauren Herman, caseworker two, children and youth, resignation effective September thirtieth. Joseph Morales, Deputy Director of Emergency Management in the Department of Emergency Services, resignation effective October fourteenth. Cameron Smith-Gall, Communication Tech, Department of Emergency Services, resignation effective October seventh. Anne Klein, Part-Time Assistant District Attorney, retirement effective December thirty-first. Julian Rudiger, Secretary B, District Attorney's Office, resignation effective October nineteenth. Kyrie Gunther, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, termination effective September sixteenth. Jasmine Evans, Part-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective October first. Samuel Markstrom, Full-Time Correctional Officer at the Jail, resignation effective September twenty-seventh. Robin Seacrest, District Justice Office Support One, MDJ Disinger's Office, retirement effective December third. Vicky Beck, District Justice Office Support One, MDJ Figaro's Office, resignation effective October fourteenth. Karen Unger, Caseworker Two at MHIDEI, resignation effective October seventeenth. Bonnie Jaeger, Office Support Two at MHIDEI, resignation effective October seventh. And Katie Satter, Juvenile Probation Officer One of Probation Services, termination effective September twenty-first.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations as presented with special call out to Anne Klein, who served us for sixteen years as a part-time Assistant District Attorney.
Second. It's been moved in second, any questions or comments regarding those transactions?
James Hunt, you mentioned Robin Seacrest, you read as retired, but that's a reservation.
That's her term, I didn't think.
And is Joe Morales as a resignation, not a retirement?
That keeps me up.
Some other things, I guess.
Any other questions, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
Needs of absence, James Hunt from the Sheriff's Office, eighteen-day leave of absence effective October twenty-first with a return date of November eighth.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve that leave of absence, any question or comment regarding the motion? Very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so ordered.
Changes in status, transfers and promotions. Lisa Walmart, promotion from Aging Care Manager One, Trainee at Area Agency on Aging to Aging Care Manager Two, at the rate of one thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-nine cents by weekly, effective October seventeenth. Ashley Zombro, change of status from Full-Time Telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services to Casual Part-Time Telecommunicator, at the rate of eighteen dollars and ninety-two cents per hour, effective October second. Gary Burna Jr., promotion from Hazmat Chief in the Department of Emergency Services to Deputy Director of Emergency Management, at the rate of two thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents by weekly, effective October seventeenth. Joseph West, promotion from Court Typeist A in the District Attorney's Office to Secretary D, at the rate of nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents by weekly, effective October seventeenth.
Motion approved.
I'll second, but I do have a quick question. I'd like verification that the Hazmat Chief was advertised?
Not yet, we're, it will be once it's moved, Deputy Director was.
I'm, you're right, that's what I'm really asking.
Yes, it was, it was advertised.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
Moving on to other transactions, Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Ricardo Rosello as a part-time meal transporter at the rate of eleven dollars and seventy-nine cents per hour, effective October seventeenth. Area Agency on Aging would like to hire the following two part-time meal transporters, both at the rate of eleven dollars and fifty-six cents, both effective October seventeenth, and that is Amy Clemson and Priscilla Oliver. Area Agency on Aging would like to hire Susan Bumberger as an Office Support Two, at the rate of one thousand seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents by weekly, effective October twenty-fourth. Children and Youth Services would like to hire the following two caseworker ones, at both at the rate of one thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents by weekly. Corinne Conlin, effective October tenth, and Carmella Friend, effective October seventeenth. Children and Youth Services would like to hire Denise Weber as a Fiscal Technician, at the rate of one thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifteen more cents by weekly, effective October tenth. President Judge Tewlock would like to hire Catherine Hackman as a Jury Attendant, at the rate of eleven dollars and fifty-six cents per hour, effective October seventh. The LCCF Jail would like to hire Ismael Basquez as the Maintenance Supervisor, at the rate of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty cents by weekly, effective October tenth. MHIDEI would like to hire Dana Heiss as an Office Support Two, at the rate of one thousand seventy-seven dollars and sixteen cents by weekly, effective October tenth. GIS would like to hire Alyssa Banz as a GIS Specialist, at the rate of one thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty cents by weekly, effective October seventeenth. Clerk of Courts would like to hire Bonnie Betts as a Part-Time Court Clerk, at the rate of twelve dollars and eighty cents per hour, effective September twenty-sixth. And the Treasurer's Office would like to hire Lisa Lilly as an Accounting Clerk C, at the rate of one thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents by weekly, effective October tenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the personal transactions as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve those transactions, any questions regarding the motion? Comments, very none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move.
Moving on to Salary Board, if there are no questions regarding the transactions presented, is there a motion to adopt these transactions under the Salary Board?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve those Salary Board transactions, any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all the same signs, so move. Thank you, well done.
Sounds very familiar.
Michael, thank you for your patience for a little behind.
Good, thank you. Good morning, Michael Anderson, Director of Domestic Relations. I am here today to ask for your approval for three professional service contracts for our hearing officers. These hearing officers have been in place for a while now. However, as part of the Cooperative Agreement, they have and should have had contracts with the county, with court and with my office. And we do not at this point have those contracts, that's what I presented to you. And so these contracts should be running the length of the Cooperative Agreement. So I'm asking that we make it effective October first of this year, will run through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
We'll run through September 30th, 2025. Those three hearing officers are Kristen Lee, Roslyn Presby and Ellen Largo. And those hearing officers, they are appointed by the President Judge and they do hear our domestic relation cases in hearings that we hold on Thursday.
Motion approved.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve those hearing officer contracts as presented. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. I think it was more relaxed, only 30 days out from the election.
Absolutely. Call out to at least three election workers.
I said, you guessed that. Stress the ones and show on.
John Norma, the people here, the former election worker, so thank him. Thank you.
See you, Mike.
See you. Here comes the stress.
Here comes the stress.
I might not be that pippy.
Please introduce yourself and you may proceed.
Director of Elections. Few items to cover today. First, we should probably start with ballots. For you is an example of each type of ballot available, not all ballots, but each type of ballot layout. I didn't really see much of a difference in there except for the before-mentioned Spanish translation of the two parties and the addition of the districts and the few races.
And those were requested by the state.
Required, not required, but requested.
Well, I want to say thank you for hanging in there. It was a lot of last-minute changes. So I'll make a motion to approve the ballots as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. That we approve ballots for the November 8th election as presented. Any questions regarding the ballots? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move. Any questions for Mike? Oh, yeah, one more thing. Sorry, nevermind.
That's my role. I usually mess it up. I'm doing pretty good here, Mike.
The next thing I'd like to cover is the Run Back Contract. This is a piece of equipment that Joel and I want to look at in Dolphin County. And the 32nd description is that it's a large piece of equipment that processes inbound mail. It matches up the inbound mail we get to the voter record, including signature matching. And then sorts it by either precinct or tray. It's very flexible in how we organize and set things up once we roll it out. It would handle all of our inbound mail for the elections. And the big benefit is that it then generates a file that updates the state data. So theoretically, this would eliminate errors in input, the human errors of scanning things in when you're doing that much mail. It's rolled out in a number of counties already. And the big numbers you want are on the very back page here, 16, page 16. And that covers your cost, which would be 100% covered by the new habit plan.
Let's see, another question? Well, let's get a motion. A motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I have a question, but I guess they have it covered there. And it'll loop through here right now. So I'll go ahead with the question. Turn it up. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
Okay. So this contract then, if, well, when we sign it then, this is a piece of equipment they will build for us. It's not a next-day delivery. It'll take some time, but we'll have to have a slot to put it through the drive.
Just remember, the thing about the signature matching, that seems to me to be a quagmire because people's signatures change over time. And if it doesn't match, what's the, you know, what?
Great question. So we, we have a lot of flexibility in how we handle it, but how it would default or how I would set it up would be, we would have, it's a pretty amazing machine we see in action. It's really amazing. It sucks the mail in, hits with a laser. The laser measures the exact weight, which it then compares to an example package piece that we have. That's how we know that we have the correct piece of mail inside the envelope. If it does not have that piece, it kicks it into this tray and says you're missing an envelope. Or we can presume it's missing the envelope or the ballot inside. Then it compares the signature based on the data file that we have for the voter. And if the signature matches, it proceeds as normal. If not, it kicks it into a second tray and says the signature doesn't match. It's up to us to take that extra step to decide what to do.
I'd also like to point out that one of the amazing things that I really liked about this system was we're getting eight different trays essentially. And they're not cheap, but four come with a machine and we're getting four extra. And this will allow us to program it for four different years. And the election cycle is four years. So we've had some recaps, like with District Judge. And, you know, the potential's there for legislative recount or a school board, whatever. But the point is, we can program it for each of the election years to the probably most contested races that would happen. And it's amazing because then the rest of those ballots do not have to be touched because they're all sealed. You're not disturbing the seals. They stay in storage. And you're just dealing with the trays that are pertinent. And we're also following the law that when there is a recount, you know, they have to go through a certain process. It's a legal process. And we're actually able to do it in the time period required. It's so efficient. I just cannot imagine. But the Dolphin County Voter Registrar was so credible in his endorsement of this machine that I think it's a really good investment for Lebanon County. And if we have fewer workers, this is going to pick up a lot of the slack in the office and takes up more room. But it's very, and the time that we spend is truncated into a very small time. I don't know if it's a quarter of the time.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll have to see what it's capable of versus what we, like, it's capable of doing weeks of work in 30 minutes.
Yeah.
But that's not literally what's going to happen because the work's going to roll in slowly and then it'll be doing a lot of work quickly. And then we'll still have to back clean up after some time. So it's remarkable as equipment and it's modular. It has lots of features that we have not opted for at this time, but if we wanted to add other features to it, it's modular system, just plug in. And you could upgrade it later.
The cost is about $180,000.
Uh, yes, yes. We knocked off, because we already have a letter opener, we knocked off $20,000 off.
Okay. Yes. Does it cost $180,000 the first year and then additional $20,000 each year?
Correct.
$260,000.
It's $180,000 and then there's a monthly, or I'm sorry, a yearly maintenance agreement for $20,000.
Okay, gosh, that's amazing. And shipping to be determined? Do you know that?
I don't know the shipping now.
All right, thank you.
And I just have one quick thing for, the LNA testing is kind of in the way. You're wrapping hopefully up today?
LNA is...
Our testing of all our equipment and ballots running through all the equipment. So far, everything's going through. But there is a sign-off process on every machine, so that slows us down.
Did I did announce the dates for registration and mail?
Oh, you, did you, okay.
Yep.
I think I'd be one more. The one question I was asked last night was when will these ballots go in the mail?
There's the magic question.
People were looking for them already.
Oh.
I said, not before Monday for sure.
Right, so the phone rings every two minutes in our office on that. So the ballots, as you know, have been ready. We were, you guys officially approved them now, but we've had them. We've had them, but we don't want to send them out until they go through all the LNA testing. Ballot is the ballot, but it's just verifying that those ballots go through every single machine. And it's tedious and we know they will. But until we, until we finish, we don't want to drop them in the mail. So I was hoping to get LNA done by the end of today. I was over there first thing this morning and it looks like they might be done more like tomorrow morning. Once they're done, we're contacting David A. Smith with her file and we'll turn it around. So I don't know if that means they'll hit the mail Saturday or Monday, but it'll be the beginning of next week, I believe.
I told them I'd wait till Monday, you know, because...
When they hit the mail, when they hit the mail.
Yeah, that's not when they'll get them, but when they go out.
May I ask, what's your project given ballpark figure for mail for this cycle?
We are currently, I looked at two days because I've been over at the warehouse, but I'm guessing between $11,000 and $12,000 right now request. And we should have a big chunk come in yet in the next two weeks. And then it should trail off after that.
Great, and our vendor has our paper. They sent us a photograph of the skin of our paper.
The E. K. County.
Right across it to assure us that our paper's there.
Makes you feel better. It is a real crunch. The crunch is real.
All right, Sean, thank you very much.
Sure.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Holly.
You introduce yourself. You may proceed.
Holly Leahy, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program. I'm here this morning to present several items for your consideration. The first, our Provider Contract Amendments to hopefully finalize fiscal year 21, 22. We have four contract amendments in total of $4,347. These are due to additional units being utilized by the consumers and programs. And this would be covered throughout fiscal year 21, 22, allocation and budget. We are not asking for any additional county tax dollars for expenditures.
I'll make a motion to approve Provider Contract Amendments for $4,347.
Motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you. The next are fiscal year 22, 23 contract amendments. These are pretty extensive. There are 31 contract amendments in total. And this is primarily due to early intervention, the Office of Child Development and Early Learning, implemented rate increases for all of the EI services. So the total contract changes are $77,908. This would be covered for our fiscal year 22, 23 allocation and budget. So we are not asking for any additional county tax dollars.
Make a motion, approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve those 22, 23 Provider Contract Amendments. Any questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
The next, for your consideration, is a Signatory Authorization Letter. This is for the Department of Human Services for our Mental Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program Income and Expenditure Reports. This would allow the county administrator, Janie Book-MF, as well as myself, to sign the reports for the duration of your commission and would apply to the original submission as well as any required revisions to the income and expenditure reports.
I'll make a motion to approve Holly and Janie as signatories for the commissioners on these contracts.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. I have a question. Does it require both or is it either?
It requires both.
Requires both.
Yes.
Okay, that's better. Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
And then finally, I have one more Signatory Authorization Letter. This is for the purposes of contractual agreements, amendments, revisions and any other incidental documents related to any contracts with major DEI program providers. Should you approve, the authorization would be for myself to sign those documents. I would present those documents to you as I normally do. And any revisions over $10,000 would not be signed before you would approve those contracts.
Motion to approve that authorization.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. That we approve that motion. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move. Holly, thank you.
Thank you.
Do one more thing. I didn't talk to Molly ahead of time, so this is a surprise. Could you, first, we'll talk about the cottage. First, remind everyone what it is and what we've been doing to renovate it here for the last few months. And you're almost done.
Yeah.
So let us know where that is in the process and what your timeline is to start to relax it.
Okay. So we are really excited about the cottage. We're calling it the cottage. It will be for individuals that have been released from our county jail system that have served their sentence and simply need a home to transition back into our community. The cottage would allow for three individuals to have that opportunity and they would be able to stay in the cottage for up to one year. This would allow them time to, if they have any fines or things that they need to pay off, this would give them opportunity to, if you can job, get integrated and back into the community and pay back those fines so that they would be able to go to another more long-term housing, alternative housing arrangement. And we would certainly assist those individuals in locating any alternative housing. We also have a provider that will be working directly with those individuals during their time at the cottage. So they will have a very high level of monitoring and oversight during their time at the cottage, as well as when they integrate into alternative housing. The cottage is moving along very well. So it was planned to be completed by December 1. I think we're right on target to have a cottage, all those renovations completed by December 1. If you go by the outside, it's pretty much completed. It looks, yeah, I'm super excited about the exterior. But if you go inside, it's really exciting as well. All the flooring has been done, all the painting. They're installing the kitchen as well as the bathroom as well. And I think we're really, really on target to have those renovations completed. Definitely by the end of December. We're working on the things for inside now. So the furniture and everything that's necessary for them to move into the home. So that's currently what we're working on is really providing all of those things. So it's kind of a balance with the home and when it's going to be completed and when we can actually start moving things into the home.
But this satisfies all the requirements of a home plan for?
Yes.
So they can leave when they're supposed to leave, you know, rather than having to wait till they figure out whether, you know, how they're going to present a home plan, would they mean that they have too many options?
Yes, absolutely. And so this would be for individuals that do have serious mental illness and/or maybe they have intellectual disabilities as well. They could have a previous history of substance use, but they cannot be curating any illegal substance uses. So that would not be allowed. So we're really, we're really excited. We do plan to have an open house once it's all completely ready. And then in the meantime, we'll be working on referrals and accepting individuals into the cottage.
I think the neighbors would like that, to have the open house. They were at first a little apprehensive and came around, so.
Yes, yes. And the contractors told me that they've had at least a dozen individuals that have stopped by to see if they can either purchase the home or actually rent the home. So there's been a lot of activity we've prepared to the houses. They've seen a lot of things happening at the cottage.
And the history is that we purchased this in about 2017
Yes.
with the intent of tearing it down and making some additional parking because it really wasn't in great condition. And so that parking need subsided a bit and then this opportunity came along. Holly was able to find some funding outside of the county's, county's regular funding or general fund or her state funding outside of that. And started in June or July?
July of last year, yes.
No, I mean, the work started.
The work started, yes, in June.
So, yeah, it really looks great. I mean, I haven't been in for a few weeks, but I've driven by it. It really looks good. I can understand why people are stopping by the wire because it's, you know, it's, it's just, it's a real improvement. We went through a lengthy process with the city to get to where we are, but the city's got to be pleased with the way it turned out.
And I don't want to put you on the spot either, but we do have some of our retirees here. And just to give them a sense of, the numbers that really shock laypeople, the juvenile placement numbers per day, the per diems on those, just remind us the cost of some of those placements for offenders that, is that what? I'm sorry.
I think she had those.
No, not the...
I wouldn't have those numbers, sorry.
I thought she was in with Audrey.
No, I wouldn't have those numbers, but it is astounding. I know it's very, very high. I don't know the exact numbers, but it is very, very high for that.
I think Erin mentioned the other day, some of them can be near $1,000 a day.[1790.40]
I mean, it's a arson or some other type of serious crime that hard to, hard to maintain.
They have, they have to call up to forty different providers to try to find the place for them, so it's just, that's another side of, you know, the work that we do here and that is very challenging. All right, Holly. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, I have a number of items for your approval. Uh, first is a, a request and recommendation by the county's safety committee. Um, as I think you're aware, the county's property and general liability carrier, P-COR, Pennsylvania County Risk Pool, provides a loss control grant each year of thirty thousand dollars to each member county to invest in things that will reduce our exposure, reduce our losses, which is a variety of things from slips and falls to preventing injuries and, and just improvements to property, even equipment that'll reduce our liability. The, uh, and, and the jail has requested, uh, through, through deputy Otte, our safety committee meeting, requested some equipment, which is simply known as the glove. This is a, a pair of gloves that is touch activated and will emit an electric charge that is similar to a taser but less. Brad's here, thankfully.
I don't like your fence, maybe.
Yeah, and it, it just, it just stops a person from acting out or, or whatever they're involved with, but with much less risk than, than a taser would. The fall risk is, is less. You know, it's not likely that someone's just going to be immobilized and fall and possibly injured on that fall. So, um, we did have a demo here locally, which involved probation, sheriff's office, the jail. Um, and I think everyone, it's safe to say everyone was pretty impressed with the technology. They are about thirteen hundred dollars a pair, which includes cleaning, uh, equipment and things for the gloves. And, um, they would like to have three of those pair of gloves at the jail. Total cost, actually fourteen ninety five a pair with everything. And, um, while I mentioned that, that the, that the county's grant from P-COR was eligible, uh, we then learned from our P-COR, P-COR Loss Control Coordinator that they are so impressed by it that, that one of the reinsurance carriers is actually kicking in money to, for counties to, to acquire these because it's just such an improvement in, you know, reduced risk. So, um, I guess I can, Brad, if there's anything I missed that you wanted to add, you actually kind of demoed.
We kind of want to see how it goes for the jail, sheriff's office might be in the future looking forward to.
Who was the young hippie that got the touch?
Oh, a bunch of you of us. It's, it's more of a, like a pain compliance, like, you know, I, I, there's a test demo I use, it's like a touch, just kind of like, ow, you, you wanna listen, like, more like, yeah.
But you, and you kind of, at this point concluded it's good for the confined environment of the jail, but maybe not the street.
Yeah, like somebody doesn't want to come out of their cell, like, get a lot of injuries from idiots that are being, you know, don't want to, you're moved. It's safer working.
Hey, one question, uh, the technology is new to me. If, um, a person would be moving and they grab a metal bar in the cell, would they themselves catch on? No.
It, it doesn't conduct to anybody else.
Okay.
So, uh, with that recommendation, we ask your approval to utilize that funding for this device.
I'll make that motion, I'll bring it.
Second.
So it's been moved in second, that we need that safety committee to fill that request by the safety committee. Any questions or comments?
One more, just it actually serves both the liability concern of reducing chance of injury to an inmate or to anyone who's, who's, um, you know, on the other end. And it, it also reduces the worker's compensation exposure because we often have correctional officers who, who get sprains and injuries and so on when they're involved in these types of stuff. Just wanted to mention that.
Anything else, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
Uh, I have a proclamation for your consideration of, to be provided to Deborah Wright, who is a Lebanon County resident who is participating, um, in the, hold on, there's so many. She's actively involved, so she's involved with DARE, Girl Scouts, Children's Miracle Network, Special Olympics, Red Cross and so on. She has in the past been the Miss United World as well as, she is Delaware, USA, Mrs. Maryland, Mrs. Pennsylvania International, Mrs. Galaxy and Miss Pennsylvania for America. And I'm not sure if you have it on here, but she's vying for another title and this is something to contribute towards that credibility.
Make a motion to approve the proclamation for Deborah Wright.
Second. It's been moved in second, that we approve that proclamation. Any questions regarding the motion? Lebanon County, it goes, uh, Kalashia. Any, you know, not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Okay. Uh, would recommend for the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol, a, um, an appointment to the advisory council of Courtney Franklin to her first three-year term, which would end in February nineteenth, twenty twenty five. A Lebanon County resident, employed as a respiratory therapist, and this would be the optional category for advisory council.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve Courtney Franklin to this three-year term. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
For the Lebanon County Commission for Women appointments, one member had resigned effective September twenty two due to job duties. That was Mary Banda. Her term was, was set to expire the end of twenty twenty three. So the commission has interviewed some new potential members and are recommending to you Judy Hummel, which would be effective August twelfth, I'm sorry, October twelfth through December thirty first of twenty twenty five. She is from Myers Town, as well as Marilyn Viscano, Viscano of Lebanon. And that term would go to, also to December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Make a motion, we approve Judy Hummel and Marilyn Viscano to the Commission for Women.
Second. Thanks to Mary Banda for her service. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Next, I have an amendment for an agreement of sale. This, I will call this the final amendment to the final amendment. As you recall, we, we did an amendment to the agreement of sale with our property next to the, um, the driver's center down along Walnut Street. We had intended by now to have a subdivision plan in place for the buyer to reach settlement, but we don't anticipate that being approved, so probably early November. The buyer, I will make it clear, the buyer is prepared and ready to settle. He's made that clear to us and they're ready at any time. So we just simply need to get the process completed through South Lebanon Township. Matthew and Hockley is doing that on our behalf. And I think there were one or two comments yet to be addressed and resubmitted. Their meeting is on October twenty fourth. And then the supervisor, if it's approved, planning commission meeting, then the supervisors meet October twenty fifth. And we'll be able to consider it then. If not, we still have two meetings in the month of, of November if anything trips us up. But this extension would take us to December fifteenth.
Make a motion to approve the extension, the tenth amendment to BP management for the property on the east end of the county.
It's been moved in second, that we approve this extension. Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
Liquid fuels application for county aid from North Handville Township. They have a line painting project of sixteen thousand one hundred dollars and would like to use their allocation toward that, which is two thousand three hundred and eighty one dollars for North Handville.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve that liquid fuels allocation to North Handville Township. Questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
I have two real estate property exemption requests for disabled veterans who've met the obligations of the program as eligible applicants. They are Daniel, Daniel Schatzel of Sweetbrier, Sweetbrier Lane in Lebanon and T. Dantapa of P. Carl Street, Lebanon.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we need questions or comments? If you're not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move.
Two hotel tax grant fund applications, first being to the Penn State Extension. This was submitted by Del Voight, the senior extension agent there. The extension is planning to hold a Penn State Extension Crop Day at the exposition center. And by their narrative that they attached, you will see that this draws from all over the state. It's a, uh, an opportunity for some to get their certifications and in forage crop, field and forage crop, and they've had them from as far away as Mercer County. They typically have at least two hundred fifty people in attendance. And, um, this would help them with the promotion of it as well as to reduce the overall cost so that the registration fee is more palatable and they can draw more.
I guess my only question is, looking at the breakdown, should we be paying for the food?
Uh, I think that's just their total budget, they're giving you there. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's part of it that's being paid for. But I mean, the answer is, yes, you could. I mean, it's been part of other programs in the past.
I see.
Not, not all of the applications you get are this highly detailed.
No, but they should be, yeah. This is a wonderful application, in my opinion, but I'll make a motion to approve. I mean, it's three hundred dollars for a snack and forty three hundred for a lunch. But I thought I would ask because I didn't remember the others having food at home.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, so move.
And the last one is for Lebanon Valley Bicycle Coalition. It was submitted by Ron Burks, the treasurer. They are planning to have a bikes and bikes cycling event with Lebanon Bicycle Recycle Organization at Colton Park. And the total project cost for this is five thousand dollars. They're asking for a one thousand dollar grant toward the program to be held October twenty ninth. They will have track demos, repair clinics, bike trail tours, bike show, food trucks, et cetera.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve the Lebanon Valley Bike Coalition's request for a thousand dollars from hotel tax. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so move. Okay, I'm gonna just add one thing for the good of the order. We just surpassed twenty thousand acres of preserved farmland in Lebanon County. Huge, um, milestone for the county. It's thirty years in the making and does help preserve the quality of life for Lebanon County. Unfortunately, yes, but it was, it was, you know, a very well-attended event. And so we thank all participants over the years for helping make it, make it possible. But that's huge for, it ties in very nicely with our rail trail and Camp Shand and other investments in quality of life to have that farmland preserved to keep our, you know, county as agriculturally oriented as possible. So I just wanted to end on that note. Okay, anything else? Not, motion to adjourn. Let's go. Stand adjourned, thank you.